Good evening, everyone. Township of Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting is now in session. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975 has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on December 28, 2019, and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 5, 2020. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Sedata?
Present.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Present.
Mr. Mansouri?
Present.
Mr. Schmuel?
Here.
Mr. Kamba?
Here.
Vice Chair Ski Bar?
Here.
Chairwoman Federick?
Here, thank you. Two announcements this evening. The case Z 53 2018 Rosenberg 49 Hamlin, it has been postponed until March 24th. No renotice except that there will be two residents that must be sent notices. Also, the third case, case Z 02-2020 Lamar Advertising Pen of Pen LLC, there has to be a renotice, and there is no date at this time, and as soon as the renotice happens and we have a date, it will be on our agendas. Having said that, can you call the first case, please?
Yes. Case number Z 50 2019 Meyer Condowall, 15 Hamilton Avenue, Edison, New Jersey, 08820. Section 37.63-1, Sections 2, 3, 10, and 16, Balkan use or D variances sought to construct a new single-family dwelling with an attached garage. Lot area required is 7,500 square feet, existing is 6,000 square feet. Lot width required is 75 feet, existing is 60 feet. Maximum lot coverage permitted is 23 percent, proposed is 25.8 percent. Maximum FAR permitted is 44, proposed is 49 percent. Effective properties located in the RB zone designated as Block 643A, lots 21-23 on the Edison Township Tax Map. All paperwork is in order.
Good evening, Mr. Fletcher. How are you?
Good evening.
Are you going to be testifying, or is your client going to be also?
I will be, but he's certainly here to answer any questions.
Okay, do you want to swear him in now?
Yeah. Mr. Fletcher, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And Mr. Condowall, if you could also, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher, I know you've been here many, 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 many times, but for the record, can we have your qualifications, please?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. My licenses are current.
Okay, great, we'll accept your qualifications. Go ahead, please.
Okay, the subject property known as 15-
You want to bring that microphone a little closer, please, and speak into it?
The subject property, is that better?
Yep, much better, thank you.
Known as 15 Hamilton Avenue, it's also lots 21 through 23 in Block 643A. It's a 60 by 100-foot lot located in the RB zone. The subject property has two existing variances. For lot area, 7,500 required, 6,000 square feet is existing. And also for lot width, where 75 feet is required in the zone, 60 feet is existing. Two variances are requested to allow the applicant to construct a new home. One is lot coverage by building, 23 percent is allowed, we're at 25.8 percent. FAR, where 40, sorry, 0.44 is allowed, and we are at 0.49. So we're exceeding it by 5 percent. I would like to point out to the board that were this an existing, sorry, if this was a conforming 7,500-foot lot, there would be no variances requested. We would be well within the lot coverage by building, and well within the FAR standards. So I believe it's a situation of, certainly it's a C1 hardship because of the size of the lot, and I believe that you see two criteria where the benefits outweigh the detriments, where an older home is being replaced by a new, modern home for citizens of the Township of Edison is certainly a plus. I think the home will be an aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood, and will fit in with some of the other new construction that's happened over the last few years. I did prepare an exhibit to show the nature of the neighborhood, if I may put it into evidence.
Sure, Mr. Fletcher.
Mr. Fletcher, that'll be marked as A1.
Exhibit A1 is a color-coded copy of the Edison Township Tax Map. It shows the 200-foot radius and the 300-foot radius around the subject property. Subject property is highlighted in blue. The orange highlighted properties are substandard. There's quite a few 60-foot lots, there's also a number of 40-foot lots, a couple of 55-foot lots immediately across the street. Of the total within 200 feet, there's 28 properties. 18 are non-conforming, that represents 64 percent. 10 are conforming. Within the 300-foot radius, it's a total of 39 properties. 22 are non-conforming, representing 56 percent of the total. 17 are conforming. So I put this exhibit in to show the board that certainly the lot size and lot width is very consistent with the neighborhood pattern. There's no available land on either side to make it larger.
Is that it, Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Fletcher or the applicant?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
I got a quick question. Is this, is this property, so are we just rebuilding on an old piece? Or this is an addition?
This is a brand-new home.
This is a brand-new home.
Yes, Mr. Ski Bar?
So what's on the site, is there a house there currently?
Yes.
And the new building, will that be within the same footprint of the existing building, or are we going out and addition?
Existing is a very small house. We will certainly be larger than the existing building, but I would point out we're complying with all the setback requirements.
Mr., I do have a question. When you say attached garage, there's an old garage there now, I'm assuming that's coming down?
That will be demolished, yes.
And then this, the new attached garage will be just attached to the house?
Yes, part of the home.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Fletcher or the applicant? None? Okay, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Okay, there being none, I'll close the case, and I'll go to the board, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to approve this. The reason being is because Mr. Fletcher has pretty, has shown us very well that, you know, the vast majority of our, of the homes here, the applicant are, you know, almost, this, excuse me, this would be a good addition to the neighborhood. This would conform with all the surrounding neighborhood area, and I think this is a motion that should be granted.
Do I have a second?
Second. Mr. Sedata?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Kamba?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Ski Bar?
Yes, on the motion.
Chairwoman Federick?
Yes, on the motion. Okay, thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Good evening.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you.
Case number Z 54-2019 Adnan and Zenat Azad, 10 Fairmount Avenue, Edison, New Jersey, 08820. Section 37.63-1, Sections 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 10, 13, and 16. Balkan use or D variances sought to renovate the existing first floor and construct a two-story addition to the rear of the existing single-family dwelling. Required lot area is 10,000 square feet, existing is 5,000 square feet. Required lot width is 85, existing is 50 feet. Front yard setback required is 25 feet, proposed is 18.35 feet, which is existing. One-side yard setback is 10 feet, proposed and existing is 3.17 feet. Combined side yard setback required is 25, proposed and existing is 13.96 feet. Maximum building coverage permitted is 20 percent, proposed is 27.66. Max FAR permitted is 37 percent, proposed is 55.98 percent. Effective properties located in the RBB zone designated as Block 545B, Lot 20 on the Edison Township Tax Map. All paperwork is in order.
Good evening, Mr. Wiley.
Good evening. This is an application to renovate the existing structure and add in addition to the rear. Most of the variances are being dictated by the fact that this is an undersized lot, substantially below the RBB standard, that is, it's 5,000 square feet as opposed to the 10,000 that's required in the zone. The two exceptions to that is the maximum lot coverage and the FAR. To try to prove our case tonight, I'm going to have three witnesses. The first witness will be the architect, who will describe the structure, proposed structure, as well as the floor plan. I will then have the applicant, who is also the resident, describe his need for this as a result of his family. And the last witness will be the planner, who will testify and give the justification for the bulk and use variance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Okay.
You can go ahead.
First, I would like to call Mark. If you could provide your name and address for the record.
Mark Marcel, 505 Main Street, Metatcha, New Jersey.
Mr. Marcel, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And Mark, I know you've appeared a few times before this board, but for the record, what licenses do you possess with the state of New Jersey?
I hold a license to practice architecture in the state of New Jersey since 2007, and my license is current.
Okay, thank you, we'll accept the qualifications. Mr. Wiley?
All right, thank you. If you could describe this proposed renovation and addition?
Yes, the applicant and I took great care to, essentially the bulk of the addition is proposed, a two-story rear addition. So we took great care to place that, to place that addition within the required setbacks along the rear of the property. So this blue shaded area on the survey is the proposed rear two-story addition. There is also a proposal to provide a full second floor over this existing half-story on the right side of the house. We took great care to try to maintain the character and aesthetic of the home as it presents itself to the street. We maintained the left side, this two-story left side, and open porch. We're not proposing to change that aesthetic. We find it to be pleasing. And we simply expanded over the right side of the house, and designed the roof lines in such a way, and mimicked the windows, so that it appears as though this addition could have existed for quite some time. The existing house is rather small, it's just over 5,000 square feet. It has technically three bedrooms, but one of the bedrooms is very small. The family's growing, so their goal is to turn this into a modest four-bedroom house, approximately 2,750 square feet. So from a planning perspective, the addition is this rear portion, which on the first floor will include a bedroom for the applicant's parents, and a new kitchen. And then upstairs, we are proposing to add two additional bedrooms, with the existing bedroom remaining in the front. So it will become a four-bedroom house with three full bathrooms.
Is there any question to this witness?
Does the board have any questions from Mr. Marcel?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taglianetti?
It says here, side yard setback, one side, 3.17 feet. Can you show us where that is on the map?
The existing house on the, on the left side, the north side of the property, is 3.17 feet from the property line. That condition is existing.
That's the existing?
Yes, and is not proposed to be changed.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Ski Bar?
Actually, is there a finished basement, or?
There is no finished basement. The basement that currently exists in the home is, is under the original rectangle of the front left-hand portion of the home. This portion of foundation to the right, which is currently under the one-and-a-half story space, is a crawl space, and the foundation under the proposed addition will be a crawl space.
Thank you.
Mr. Marcel, I do have a question. Basically, you're not adding to the footprint. It's just that you're adding above the, when I'm looking at, at the right side and the second story.
No, I'm sorry, this shaded blue area is the proposed-
Oh, that is the addition, okay.
Footprint expansion.
Because there's sort of like a second story, there's a stick out there now, so I wasn't clear. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions of Mr. Marcel?
No.
Yes, Mr. Sedata?
You will be having a basement under the new portion?
No, there will be a crawl space under the addition.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Wiley, moving along.
All right, thank you. Next, I would like to call the applicant, Mr. Azad.
Mr. Azad, would you raise your-
If you could stand.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And state your full name for the record.
Adnan Azad.
Mr. Azad, you and your wife are the owners of 10 Fairmount Avenue in Edison?
That is correct.
And how long have you resided there?
Almost little over five years.
Okay. And what is your purpose for requesting this approval for an addition to your present home?
So we have been living here for six years. We came, initially, we came here for good school district. We heard that it's a good neighborhood and everything. My good kids went to the school, now they've grown up. My elder one is in college, my younger one is in high school. We love the place, the neighborhood is very good, area is very good, we feel safe, it feels home. My, since, right now, my, both my daughters are sharing the room. We have two bedrooms, says three, but technically the third one is just, we can't even put a bed there. It's just like a, what we're using as a wardrobe, because we don't have wardrobes in our room. So that's where we keep the place. Technically, practically, it is two bedrooms. One bedroom is shared with me and my wife, second one, my children are sharing. So we need two bedrooms for them, so that they can have their own separate rooms. That's where, that's why we need two rooms, and one extra room for my parents. My father is 75, my mother is 65, both have medical conditions, and they can't even climb stairs. So the one bedroom, which is proposed on the, on the first, on the first floor next to the kitchen, that's for my parents. They are 75, and I want them to live with us. So that's why we are proposing this addition.
Addition, okay. Is there any question to this witness?
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Azad? Moving along, Mr. Wiley.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Matt.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And please state your full name for the record.
Matthew Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R. I'm a professional engineer, planner, certified floodplain manager, and a certified municipal engineer, and I have testified in front of this board previously as both an engineer and a planner. Tonight, I'll be testifying as a planner.
Okay, thank you, sir, we'll accept your qualifications.
All right, could you advise the board what your involvement with this application is?
Sure. So I had been retained to discuss the, you know, the variances being sought this evening, and more get an understanding of the area of the, of Edison, that the property is located, and confirm and ascertain whether what we're proposing is in line with not only the township, the area, but also the township. So before I even looked at the specific property, what was being proposed, I wanted to get an idea of the surrounding area, of this area, and start pulling some of the information relative to the history of this project, this property. So this property is part of the Oak Tree Garden subdivision back from 1926. That subdivision created about 425 lots, give or take. All the lots that were created were essentially 25 by 100-foot lots. So quite often, what you're going to see is 25, lots that are some iterative step of 25, 50-foot lots, 75-foot lots, 100-foot lots. So when I was looking at this specific property, I wanted to get an idea of when this was built as, in comparison to the rest of the neighborhood, and this actually was one of the first homes built in this area. It was actually built in 1927. So I do have one exhibit this evening that I'll mark as A1. And what Mr. Wiley is handing out currently is an aerial from 1930. This aerial is from the NJDEP's NJGeoweb Interactive Web Mapping Application. It's just a service the DEP provides that allows you to pull information on a property, including some historical aerials. So this aerial, again, is from 1930, and the only sort of addition or modification I've made to this plan is I've added a little call-out showing the subject property. As you can see, this is pretty much the only property in the area as of 1930. So getting a better understanding of the properties that surround this, there are 12 properties in total in this block. Six of the properties in this block are fully conforming, 100-foot by 100-foot lots. Three of the 12 lots are 83 feet by 100, and two are 75 feet by 100. The subject property that we're discussing is 5,000 square feet, significantly smaller than the other properties within that block, actually 33 percent smaller than the other, the next smallest property. So as Mr. Marcel testified too, the application before you this evening is a two-story addition in the rear, and a second-story addition over a half-story on the right side of the property. The variances we're seeking are for building coverage, which is a C variance, and then a floor area ratio variance, which is a D4 variance. I believe the variances can be granted under the guise of the C1 or C2 variance criteria. I'll first address the C1 variance criteria. So 40:55D 70C1, C states that this board can grant a variance by reason of an extraordinary and exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property, and furthermore, it goes on to state that this would be based on the fact that the strict application of any regulation would result in peculiar and exceptional, exceptional difficulties to, or undue hardship upon the developer of such a property. So a fully conforming lot with 20 percent building coverage would be permitted 2,000 square feet of building coverage. What we're proposing is actually 30 percent less than what a fully conforming lot would be. That being said, because we are undersized by 50 percent, we are requesting a bulk variance. So I believe that the hardship is clearly evident based on the size of the property. And although I believe the hardship is evident, I acknowledge that at times, C2 variance criteria can provide more flexibility, hence the name, the flexible variance criteria. So 40:55D 70C2 states, when appeal relating to a property would advance the municipal land use law, and furthermore, the benefits substantially outweigh the detriment of variance can be granted. The detriments, the detriment associated with the floor area ratio is sort of, or building coverage is sort of twofold. Either the property can't support it, or from a neighboring perspective, you have a massing issue, where you look at property and the, and the building overwhelms you. I don't believe that will be the case in this situation. The existing home has existed for going on 100 years now, and the proposed addition in the rear is fully conforming with respect to the setbacks. I believe my clients and their architect, Mr. Marcel, have done a good job, not only considering the constraints of the property, but acknowledging potential impacts on neighboring properties. So although I see no detriment, I do believe several goals of the MLUL are advanced, specifically goals E, G, and I. Goal E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. The property is already developed with a residential structure, this is where residential development should be placed. And again, this is upgrading a home that shows its age with respect to its internal configuration. We all acknowledge that over the, as the housing stock has evolved, homes have gotten open floor plans, just larger internally. Goal G is to promote sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, residential again being one of them. I sort of think that sort of speaks for itself. And then, goal I of the MLUL is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Again, the fact that the addition is located fully within the setbacks, I think promotes the good civic design and arrangement, and I believe as Mr. Marcel's plan illustrates, the home will be aesthetically pleasing and will complement the neighborhood. I also don't believe that the variances being sought will be an impact or intent of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and I do not believe it will be a detriment to the public good. And then to quickly address the floor area ratio, again, this is triggered by the fact that the property is 5,000 square feet where 10,000 square feet is required. A fully conforming property on this lot would be permitted 3,700 square feet of floor area, and we're proposing 2,749. So we're 25 percent below what a fully conforming lot would be permitted, but due to the undersized nature of the lot, we are requesting that variance. So the Randolph Town Center case versus the Township of Randolph established the criteria for a D4 variance. So for a D4 variance, you have to demonstrate that the property can permit without detriment the exceedance of the floor area ratio. There's several reasons I believe that this property can't support it. First and foremost is the fact that the property is fully within the required setbacks, the addition, I should say. Second is that the impervious coverage is still fully conforming. We are not requesting an impervious coverage variance. And then lastly, the property provides enough and adequate off-street parking to comply with the residential site improvement standards. Therefore, I believe that the D4 variance can be granted for the exceedance of the floor area ratio. So to just very quickly summarize, I believe the variances can be sought under the C1 or C2 variance criteria, and I believe the D4 variance can be granted due to the fact that the property can support the proposal before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wilder. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Wilder and Mr. Taglianetti?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I don't know if it relates to Mr. Wild, but it has to do with impervious coverage. By the way, I pass by this home quite often. I think they've done a tremendous job of updating and making this a really attractive home. But going to the impervious coverage, if we look at the rendering, it shows grass in the front, and a small walkway. But if we look at the photograph, there's a drive area, a paved area, in front of the house on the right-hand side, and then the walkway looks like it's pavers coming all the way to the street and going all the way over to the driveway where there's that white car. My question is, have those areas been included in the impervious coverage? We've got 39.9 as a total.
Right, so if you look at Mr. Marcel's plan, on the sort of right-hand side near the bottom, it has a breakdown of the proposed impervious coverage. So it has-
I don't know if it's related to the photograph or to the rendering.
Matt, I'm not sure. What I can tell you is that the proposed impervious coverage as depicted on Mr. Marcel's plan is the intent of what the property will look- that's depicted on Mr. Marcel's plan is the intent of what the property will look like post-development. We are not...any impervious not shown on here is not proposed.
So then, what are they going to do with the existing driveway and the existing walkway that goes from the walkway going up to the house over to the driveway with a parking area? We're only counting the walkway and the driveway that's in on the property, in other words, we've got about 10 feet approximately of sidewalk and driveway that's in the public right-of-way. Now, you don't count that on impervious surface. I'm not talking about that. If you would have someone look at your photograph, we'll bring it to you.
I believe you're talking about this.
The microphone...wait a minute, excuse me. Wait, Phil, wait, excuse me. Mr. Marcel, microphone, please.
Sorry.
That's okay. I just want him to get a microphone before he kept going. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I believe you're talking about the piece of sidewalk that runs from the sidewalk running from the steps to the curb and the existing driveway, which overlaps the front of the home here.
Right, where the white cars park.
Yes, those areas are included in the impervious coverage calculation.
Thank you, that's all I need.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilder or Mr. Marcel for that fact?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many cars you can park in your driveway, in the current driveway?
So right now, the property, the driveway is just sort of visually scaling it, is about 60 feet deep, so a standard parking space is 18 feet, so you could fit three vehicles per RSI standards, you know, front to back in that driveway.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Schmuel?
During construction, any plans of shortening that driveway? Right now, it goes all the way to the back of the house.
Correct. The existing driveway is to remain essentially in its current state. I don't believe there's any intent to shorten it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ski Bar?
Actually, right along those lines, any intent to extend it?
Not at this time.
No, you're just going to take it as is?
Correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilder?
Just a comment. May I suggest that if you're going to include the impervious coverage where that automobile is in the walkway, that it be shown on the plot plan so that our officials do not say something to you later on?
We can make that change.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we so approve, it could be made a condition to the approval. Yes, Mr.?
Madam Chair, so to clarify, the lot coverage proposed is 39 percent, and you're allowed...
39.9.
And you're allowed 40 percent.
Right.
So you're under the...
Right.
...impervious coverage.
Any other questions?
One more?
That's okay.
What is the total square footage of the addition, Mark?
That's a very good question. The area of the addition is 1,184 square feet.
Okay, so he will need an SIP and block rating.
The first-floor footprint expansion is 482 square feet, so he's under the 500-square-foot threshold.
Oh, you're adding the floors. Okay, just the crawl space itself is under 500 square feet.
The crawl space itself is under 500, yes.
Okay, you said 482 square feet?
482.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions of Mr. Wilder? None? Okay, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Okay, I'll close the case and go to the board, please.
Okay, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve. I do not think that due to the design, it will be a tremendous impact or detriment to the neighborhood. I think that the addition will help the applicant accommodate his family and improve quality of life.
Mr. Taglinetti, do you want to make that condition?
I want to make an addition to that, that we will show on the plot plan the existing driveway and the existing walkway.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please.
Mr. Sadada?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Taglinetti?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Kamba?
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Ski Bar?
Yes on the motion.
Chairwoman Federick?
Yes on the motion. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiley. Have a good evening. Thank you. Resolutions, please?
Resolutions to be adopted. Case number Z-52-2019, Antran, granted. Z-01-2020, Santoli, granted. Z-11-2019, Fox and Fox, denied.
Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. See you next week.